Good evening, everyone. This is a city council meeting, Monday, June 6, 2016. We're going to start with a roll call on determination of quorum.
Laurenti.
Here.
Wright. Wyffenbach.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll have the invocation by John Britt and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, as we gather, we give you Thanksgiving for this place. We ask that you would lift up our community for peace, for reconciliation, for improved relations among all of our races. And we lift up the greater world as well, for there's an end to war and unrest and peace. Peace may reign. We give you Thanksgiving for the mayor, for the city council, for all of our civil servants, and we give you thanks for the time they dedicate to our city to make Rapid City a better place for all. We pray for your blessings upon their leadership. Guide them and lead them. We pray for respect and honor and openness in tonight's meeting. May all hear what others have to say and be open to their words. Maybe be careful with the words we choose to use this evening. We pray, Lord, for peace in the upcoming election. I ask for a good voter turnout, that all of us would cast our ballots and be heard. We pray for your blessings this evening, Lord, upon this meeting. Bring it peace and may it be fruitful. Amen.
(inaudible)
Now, onto the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? If not, can we have a motion to adopt?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here tonight to honor a longtime city employee who has retired. And when I say longtime, that's the -- that's an understatement. John Wagner has worked for the city for forty-three point seven-five years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Forty-three and three-quarter years, retiring as the water superintendent. And, you know, it's one thing to be an employee with lots of longevity. That's a feat in and of itself. But to go through working for a government organization for forty-three years, I mean, he started in a different time, in the nineteen-seventies. And all the changes that he's seen and been a part of, and including acquiring new water sources and all kinds of things that have made Rapid City a better place. So, tonight, we're acknowledging his service. And I'll call on Dale Tek, the acting public works director, to say a few things.
I've had the pleasure of working with John for the last eight years, and I consider him a very close coworker and friend. He's a good man, as far as his credentials relating back to his job. The sign of an effective manager is if you leave the job that you took in a much better position than when you took it. And with John, that is absolutely the case. He has done a fantastic job as water superintendent. The city Rapid City's water system is in excellent condition, thanks to John's diligence, hard work, and long-term vision. He's been involved in many, many things over the years, and the citizens of Rapid City are blessed to have had him work for them. So, thank you, John.
Thank you. (applause)
So, John, for your service to the city from August 28, 1972, to May 27, 2016, congratulate you and thank you for all of those years. And we got you this plaque.
Oh, great. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Can I say a few words if you'd like? Sure. Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank Mayor Allender and this current council, as well as all the past councils I've had and mayors I have the privilege of working with. I feel blessed, I guess, would be the strong word, that I've had this many years in my career with City Rapid City. And, you know, the people ask me, "Well, how did you stay with the job so long?" And I say, "Well, I'm still sane. I still have my sanity after being with the city government that long." But, you know, in our position and our job, supplying water to the City Rapid City, it was always exciting. There was always something going on. I mean, we went through a terrible taste and odor problem in the eighties, and everyone here, some of the older folks are going to remember the duck yuck that we went through and the mess that Canyon Lake was in, and then the drought and Pactola was almost drained, and then acquiring downstream water rights and ratification of the Pactola contract. Just being a part of all that through all those administrations and the support from all those administrations was really exciting. So, I can say my career's never been boring. It's been a lot of fun, and I've tried to make work fun. And so, I have great appreciation for everyone that works in the public sector, especially these people behind you that have to make the decisions they do every two weeks. And I'd really like to thank my employees also. The people that I've had the privilege of working for over the years, not only in the water division, but the engineering division and the parks division, they've all been some of the most dedicated people I've ever seen, and I'm very proud of them. And I feel very good about leaving the water division as it stands today. The last person, of course, I'd like to thank is my lovely wife, Susan. She's been my support all through these years. We just had her forty-fourth anniversary, May 30th, so I've had another profession a little bit longer than this one.[647.66][647.66](laughing) And I guess my last words I'd like to leave is that, you know, if you can have fun at work and have a good attitude about things, and just everything that happens to you in
I would like to call on Rod Pettigrew, who's going to give us a brief update on some of
life, the good things, the difficult things, the challenges, if you can look at those
the work by the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Resolution Task Force.
things as gift, and once you notice them as gift or recognize them as gift, you're
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
going to be very thankful for what you have.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight to report to you on what we've been up to.
And I know my employment with the city has been a definite gift, and I know retirement is going to be a definite gift also.
My name is Rod Pettigrew, and I'm one of the ten Rapid Cityans selected to serve on
So, thank you very much again. Thank you. (applause)
the Civic Center Resolution Task Force. And I have a few other members joining me tonight. Martin Johnson is here, David Plouffe is here, and Bob Waybridge is here as well. We've been very busy since our formation in February, and during many meeting sessions, we have seen the tour of the Civic Center Barnett Arena by Patre Esavito Riker. Jeffrey Ames of Meeting the Challenge came into town, and he conducted a two-day visit. Again, that included a tour of the facility. We've had meetings with Civic Center staff, with city engineers, and other city staff, and a debriefing session with the task force. Julie Schmitz-Jensen of the Convention Center Visitors Bureau gave us a presentation of the economic impact that the Civic Center has on Rapid City. We reviewed and listened to explanations of the ADA settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, and also heard financing options with the facility and with Civic Center staff. After reviewing the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, we soon determined that this task is probably larger than any of us had envisioned, and we broke our work sessions basically into three different phases. Our first phase will be addressing the ADA violations, and as we understand and work towards, we will ultimately recommend if the Barnett Arena should be remodeled, what is the cost and scope of those remodel costs. And the task force has suggested that with subjective nature, how the Civil Rights Act defines equal access. Phase two will be looking at building modifications. Some of us are calling that life and safety issues. We're trying to understand what the key life-safety issues, such as egress and safety codes in the Barnett Arena, would be and what those ultimate costs would be. Some of the ADA fixes and life-safety issues are intertwined and very complex. Phase three, some of us are calling that remodeling or building a new facility. Some of us are calling it an economic viability, and this will explore either enhancements to the Don Barnett Arena or constructing of a new arena. This will evaluate with the group and will focus on the cost of this option versus remodeling the existing facility. Because of the complexity of the issues, we felt it was necessary, and everyone's best time was to break our group into three groups. One is to specifically look at the ADA violations, and that's headed by Kevin Anderson. Another group is our finance group, and that's how do we pay for what needs to be done. That group's headed by Mark Johnson. And the third leg of our stool is public relations, and that's headed by Bob Wayrick. And that's how do we get the information out to the public in a positive way and so that they understand the challenges that the current facility has. We've reviewed a very comprehensive list that started out with four hundred and one apparent violations for ADA of the Civic Center. By doing an accurate count of the list and discussions with the Civic Center staff, we believe we can get that below two hundred items. As I just mentioned, we brought in Jeff Ames with Meeting the Challenge. Meeting the Challenge was involved in the previous review, and we believe since they were familiar with some of the violations at the Civic Center, they would be able to efficiently, with time and cost, assist us in addressing the violations. Meeting the Challenge is going to help us and guide us to prioritize this list and put some sort of order to our list. In closing, our meetings are open to the public. We invite all interested citizens to attend. Our public relations arm has created a Facebook page specifically for the task force, so the public can visit this Facebook page, sign on, and see what's going on. Tentatively, we have three public forums for the public to come, give comment, and ask questions, and give us input on what direction they think the city should take with the Barnett Arena. If you have any questions for us, we'd be more than happy to answer those. If not...
Thank you, Rod. We have a motion to acknowledge, and we'll go to John Roberts now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question, Rod. What is the Facebook page, so I can link onto it?
Do you have that, Bob?
It's RC Civic Center Resolution Task Force.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
RC Civic Center Resolution Task Force.
RC Civic Center Resolution Task Force on Facebook. Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not so sure this question can be directed at Rod or maybe yourself, Mayor. But with all that being said, what is the rough timeline? I'm not pinning you down here, Rod or Mayor. I'm not pinning you down, but, I mean, you gave us a rough timeline before. What's your estimated timeline at this time with these tasks outlined as they are?
Well, Rod can have an opinion on this too, but I would say that thus far, this process has really gone a little faster than I imagined it would be going. I was hoping we would have this wrapped up in the first quarter of next year. I think it's reasonable that it will be less than that, but I'll defer to Rod, since he's actually doing the work.
Well, everyone on the task force wants the numbers. And it's a complicated issue, so I think it's taken, in my mind, a little longer to get the numbers, but we are almost there. And I think once the numbers are addressed, in my opinion, things will move rather quickly. Because that's what all the citizens want to know, what's it going to cost? And we want those numbers to be accurate as they can be, and I think once, like I said, once we get those things removed quickly.
Thank you. That's all. You answered it perfectly. I wasn't trying to nail down the date. I was just wondering if we were still on the mayor's timeline, and it sounds like we are.
I want to comment, the city staff has been amazing. They attend our meetings, and they're very open, and they share a lot of information with us that's very valuable to us and helps us and gives us a lot of direction. So, I want to commend the city staff for all their eagerness to help us.
Thank you.
Now, we have a question from Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I might need more of a comment. I would thank you, Rod, and all the people on the task force for taking the systematical approach to this and emphasizing to get the true and accurate information that gives us the tools that we need up here and within the city to make a really good decision. So, we appreciate all your efforts. Not as concerned about the timelines as I am the accuracy of the information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to acknowledge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're on to general public comment, which is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. So, I have two speaker request forms for general public comment, and the first one is Jean Kessloff. Sorry, hold on, hold on. The first one is Sophia Lewis.
(laughing) Sorry about that.
I'm Sophia Lewis.
Twenty-six, twelve Harvard Avenue.
Thank you for building the new soccer fields. I'm glad that you did that, because me and my teammates love to play soccer there. Now, we can play way better than we used to. I think those fields are the best fields in the world. I am very glad I still get to play on some of those fields in Academy next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Now, on to Jean Kessloff.
I thought it might be nice to hear some positive things about the fields just once in a while.
Yeah, appreciate it. Jean.
Maybe I need the chair, too. My name is Jean Olsen Kessloff, and I am president of Historic Rapid City. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to the preservation of Rapid City's history. We are currently restoring, rehabilitating the Valentine McGill County House on the corner of South and Mount Rushmore Road, which, by the way, we just found the original eighteen-eight-seven historic wood sidewalk. And no, we are not going to petition to the city to use it. As soon as the air hits it, it crumbles. It will be given an archaeological site number and documented for all time by the State Archaeological Research Center before construction resumes, something I don't remember being done in Rapid City before. My reason for being here tonight is that Historic Rapid City is in the possession of six neon signs from Rapid City's history. Howard's Body Shop, Davis Motel, Tip Top Motel, Woolworth's Luncheonette, and the Plaza Sands Motel. The Canyon Lake Club sign, which I do not have a photo of, tonight has already been moved into storage. These signs range in measurements from two feet high to three feet wide to fifteen feet high and twenty feet wide. They need to be moved and are extremely difficult to transport. Bob Fuchs has been very generous in that he has had them in his building at 321 Seventh Street, where they have been on display for a number of years. Circumstances are such that they need to be moved, and they need to be moved before the fifteenth of June. We have exhausted all means available for this to happen, and therefore are asking the city of Rapid City for funds to move them. Craig Balzer has agreed to store them inside the city facility on Adams Street until such time as they can be displayed in a public place, such as the Civic Center. These signs are a part of Rapid City's history that a lot of us remember. Who didn't eat at the Woolworth's Luncheonette when they were small? Who remembers the Go-Go Dancers at the Canyon Lake Club? Cities across the country are displaying their historic signs, and in fact, Deadwood just protected the Wild Bill Bar sign last week. Historic Rapid City, formerly the Figo Foundation, has been saving neon signs from its inception. In fact, the Lariat Motel sign was saved by Historic Rapid City and is now in the days of Seventy-Six Museum. Historic Rapid City has also secured grant funding for and donated signs to other places, such as Pier. We are asking the city of Rapid City for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. Estimates seem to be between five hundred and a thousand dollars per sign. After the move, we would submit the actual invoice from the moving company. If we cannot move these signs, they will have to be sold, probably to a private party and probably out of state. Since the Journal Newspaper article last year, we have gotten calls from private parties in different states wanting the signs. Please help us keep Rapid City's history in Rapid City.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, now, on to non-public hearing items. Items...oh, Darla Drew, sorry.
Excuse me. Because of the urgency of this request and its time sensitivity, I would move that we move this item onto the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to add this item onto the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, a motion in a second to move this item onto the agenda for tonight. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Amanda has a number, so she can pull it.
Mayor.
I think you're going to give those guys my brand. And have a little discussion if they want to fund it. I'm suggesting...
What's that?
Motion's out of order.
Okay. Why is it out of order? Because it says we can...
The city attorney, listen, so, no, just listen. City attorneys have suggested that it might be out of order because it's being added in real time without prior notice, and it requires money. So, why don't we do this instead? Why don't we go ahead and add it to the agenda, and let's just discuss it so that I can tell what the council, the general feeling of the council is? We'll just leave it at that for right now. Yep. If that's the direction you want to take. Yep, we'll handle that. Let's put it under, let's make it item one-hundred-ten-A, under Mayor's Items. Okay. Now, on to non-public hearing items, items three through one-hundred-and-eleven. We'll open public comment on items three through sixty, and we don't have any speaker request forms on three through sixty. So, we'll close public comment and go on to consent items three through sixty. Would the council like to remove any of the items from consent? We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Four items tonight. Item number twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, and forty-eight.
Okay. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Number five, please.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-nine, I will need to abstain, and item thirty-six.
Okay, so, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, forty-eight. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Number five, please.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-nine, I will need to abstain, and item thirty-six.
Okay, so, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, forty-eight. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Number five, please.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-nine, I will need to abstain, and item thirty-six.
Okay, so, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, forty-eight.
If that's the direction you want to take.
Yep, we'll, we'll handle that. Let's put it on, let's put it under, let's make it item one-hundred-ten A. Under Mayor's Items. Okay. Now, on to non-public hearing items, items three through one-hundred-and-eleven. We'll open public comment on items three through sixty, and we don't have any speaker request forms on three through sixty. So we'll close public comment and go on to consent items three through sixty. Would the council like to remove any of the items from consent? We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Four items tonight. Item number twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, and forty-eight.
Okay. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Number five, please.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-nine I will need to abstain, and item thirty-six.
Okay, so, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of twenty-two, forty-one, forty-three, forty-eight, five, twenty-nine, and thirty-six, not necessarily in that order. Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, now on to item number five. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted, I understand that this is being, this is on the agenda as a, being set up for a hearing. However, I sit on the TIF committee and, as you all know, I try to be consistent about my opposition to these tax increment financing deals. And this lost at the TIF committee level, was appealed to the Planning Commission, and unfortunately, we're seeing it here again, and it's being scheduled for a hearing. So I will be voting against it to even deserve a hearing because of the fact that the TIF committee made very sound, grounded, and logical arguments and defeated this at the TIF committee level. And I would strongly suggest my colleagues to try to go back and look at that and listen to what was proposed and why it was voted down. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and read that one into the record. Number five is a request by Kent Haig for Alta Terra Development to amend project plan for tax increment district number seventy, Highway sixteen sewer for property generally described as being located along Katrin Boulevard from Fifth Street to south US Highway sixteen and then along US Highway sixteen to Sammy's Trail and east to proposed Highland Crossing subdivision. We have a motion in a second to approve that, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to make that a motion to go ahead and approve setting the hearing for June twentieth, but I also sat on the TIF committee for this and will be voting against it unless there's some other pertinent information. But I agree with setting the hearing because it is our process and it's come up through the subcommittees from the TIF committee to the Planning Commission to Public Works, I believe. So I support setting the hearing for June twentieth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask a clarifying question of Mr. Laurenti, please?
Yes, you may.
So you're, you're saying, Mr. Laurenti, that instead of a request, this is an appeal? They're appealing it to us, is what you're saying?
Yes, it was defeated at the TIF committee level and the process is for them to appeal that denial to the Planning Commission, and now it's back to be set for a hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve a request for a hearing on June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen. Ron Wyffenbahn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, so has this been appealed to the Planning Commission as is the process? Let's see ahead. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes with one no. Now on to item number twenty-two, which is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for two thousand and sixteen railroad crossing improvements. Estimated cost, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I did a favor for my wardmate, John Roberts, and actually, I'd like to defer to him. Thank you.
Okay, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Dale Tech, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dale, I noticed that this is for Sixth Street and West Boulevard. My question is, when is La Crosse scheduled for the next rehabilitation? It's getting absolutely awful again, and unfortunately, we just redid all of these not too long ago.
Dale?
There is no current plan to do La Crosse with the state. However, the city annually looks at all the railroad crossings. With the project that you referred to a number of years ago where we went in, we put in extra-depth asphalt pavement so when the tracks settle, we can get in there and mill them off. With all the spring movement that we had this year when the ground thaws and the heavy loading of the railroad going across it, it certainly displaces the tracks and makes them a little rougher. Currently, Paul Feyman from my office, Wells Dunn Bra Ba from the Street Department, is evaluating all the railroad crossings to see what the right fix is for each one of them. I would anticipate you'll see some activity out on most of them that we can do anything with without having to involve the railroad to raise the tracks again. And then those will be taken as soon as funding is available through the state for the railroad to be able to do that.
Thank you, Dale. I appreciate it very much. And you're right, this spring you noticed it a lot more. I think one of the things that you really notice on it now is the people that almost come to a complete stop going over it, which can probably become an issue on La Crosse Street. But that one is horrendous. Most of them around town are not good again, which is sad because we just redid these. Thank you.
Okay, now Darla Drew.
I have a quick question for Dale Tech, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yes, so there's no help from the railroads on maintaining any of these intersections or crossroads?
That's correct. The railroad is responsible for the tracks and then the concrete pads that sit adjacent to the tracks. Any approach pavement going up to that is the responsibility of whoever jurisdiction the road is. So in, in most cases, it's the, the city. However, the state does have the railroad crossing on Mountain View Road on the west side of town. That's a state highway, therefore, the state's responsible for the pavement leading up to and away from the railroad tracks.
Thank you for clarifying that because I do have a lot of questions from constituents about our railroad tracks. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to basically, you know, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So if I could ask, continue a question for Dale Tech?
Yes.
Dale, after listening to what Alderman Drew's, but, but, but we coordinate with them, don't we? I mean, if, if, if it's a, if it's a crossing on state road, they coordinate with the state, they fix their track, and the state fixes the, the approach at the same time. Likewise, if it's a city crossing, if it's a city-owned street, we, we coordinate our work and their work at the same time. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so it's not, okay. So is that a Rita Jajaj's version of who gets invited to which party if it's a state? Could, I mean, could you easily explain that to the people on?
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
If there are issues with the track itself, the track is settled, or the concrete pads right next to the track are broken up, the railroad has to fix those. And they notify the state that they're going to be fixing them. Then the state will contact whoever the jurisdiction is, either the state or the city in this case, to say, hey, the railroad's coming in to fix these crossings. Now's your chance to get in and do what you need to do as well. If the railroad has no issues with their crossing, their infrastructure within that railroad crossing, and it gets rough, then it's up to either the city or the state, if we want to fix that pavement, to approach the railroad and say, hey, we need to do something here. And then we have to get a permit from the railroad to be able to get in there, in their right of way, and do some work.
Thank you. I yield my...
Okay, item number twenty-two, motion is to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item twenty-nine, which is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and Freeland Meadows LLC for sanitary sewer improvements and oversized water main cost reimbursement not to exceed thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And we pulled this so that Brad Estes could abstain from the vote. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number thirty-six, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign a construction agreement with Black Hills Energy for relocation of a sixty-nine something power line on landfill property. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this until the next Public Works meeting, I believe. Is that correct, Dale?
Okay, motion and a second. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I just ask Alderman Estes the reason we're continuing it back to Public Works, please?
Because when Dale Tech asks me to do something, I do it.
May I redirect the question to Mr. Dale Tech, please?
Yes. Dale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the, in working with the, with the Black Hills Power, we thought the agreement was done, but there were noted some changes that need to be made. So we want to get those changes made back at committee level and then run it back through council.
Okay.
So we need a vote?
Yeah, so who's in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number forty-one. Authorize staff to apply for and accept, if granted, the two thousand and sixteen COPS grant. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Chief Jaggeris an explanation of this item, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Particularly, in the past, when we've talked about the police department applying for the COPS grant, it's a worthy program, and it's a great program. But from what I remember, every time the city of Rapid City goes for the COPS grant, we have to specify that we're bringing on new officers for specific jobs that are currently not being covered by other officers. What are the responsibilities for these new officers that we're applying for? Or has the requirements changed?
The requirements have changed, and essentially, what we would do is we would bring on three additional patrol officers, and that would allow the workload to be spread out amongst all of the staff so that we would have more time for proactive community engagement and trust building, which is part of the Department of Justice's priorities for Twenty-First Century policing.
And is that why they changed the requirements now, that you can just expand current job descriptions within the organization? You don't have to try to reach out to a new function within the police department for public safety?
The grant requirements change each year, and the guidelines change each year. So we've thoroughly researched the, the current grant, and we believe that this is a potential successful grant application.
All right, thank you. I can support that.
Okay, use a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number forty-three, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign agreement between the city of Rapid City and Fire, Rapid Fire Protection, Inc., for Fire Station One Fire Suppression System. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Chief Multivern a question or two?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief, before I ask my question, I did state at Legal and Finance that item number forty-two and forty-three I had concerns with. And thank you, I did check for the agenda, and the public does now have accurate information as far as what the funding sources are for both of these items. I do appreciate that. I, I think the better information we can put out front for the public, it, it, it gives us that transparency of government so that it's, makes it easy for the public to read. And I'm one of the public, so it makes it easier for me to read. So thank you. My question on number forty-three still remains, though, that I noticed that the funding source for a fire suppression system within Fire Station One, if I'm reading this correctly, is coming out of the wildland fund? What specifically is the wildland, I, I mean, I hear wildland, and I think wildland fires out in the forest. So I'm trying to relate how we can use funds from the wildland fund in order to fund a suppression system that is very well needed in Station One, but why this funding source?
Okay, thank you for the question. The wildland fund was established, I believe, approximately two years ago. And as you know, Rapid City is being adjacent to the Black Hills. We've become very adept at fighting forest fires in and around Rapid City. And then, a number of years ago, really started within the last two decades, Rapid City Fire Department has began sending members out and equipment out to other states under interstate agreements through a national system that's actually managed out of Boise, Idaho. It's called the NIFC or National Interagency Fire Center. So we go out under the state of South Dakota under a contract. That contract is signed in advance for the upcoming wildland fire season. So if another state is, is impacted beyond their capabilities by wildfires, they will reach out through this NIFC in Boise to all the other states that maybe have available resources that could come and help. So we set pricing for personnel as well as equipment, so what, so those other states know in advance how much it's going to cost if they request help. And so when they do that, we find us sending personnel and equipment to other states like California last year and Washington and Oregon, for example. We build in pricing to be reimbursed for any related expenses that we incur. To be the personnel we send there, they pay for their wages, and then they also pay for the personnel that backfill our stations while they're gone. So that is all reimbursed. The equipment piece of it, we also build in everything from fuel to tire replacement, all the maintenance that needs to occur to those vehicles. And then, in that pricing, there is some additional funding that's built into those reimbursements. So we actually, the reimbursements outpace what our expenses are. So we build a bit of a, a fund with that. So a couple of years ago, we established this wildland fund to capture those, the higher amounts of the reimbursements. And so what we've been able to do in the last couple of years is fund things that normally would be funded out of the general fund. So, for instance, a couple of months ago, we came before you and we purchased all of the air packs, the breathing apparatus we use. About two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of those purchases came out of this wildland fund. It was money that those other agencies basically reimbursed us for the services we were providing. This is another example, the thirty thousand for this fire suppression system. We just purchased a compressor that fills our air bottles. So it's good for the community. We save some money in that. Those funds don't have to come out of the general fund. They're basically being paid by these, these large forest fires. And so it, it's a win-win for the community. Our firefighters go out and get valued experience. They come back. They're better prepared to deal with those types of emergencies if they happen here in Rapid City or in the Black Hills. So, I don't know if that's enough, or if I can elaborate on any...
Well, it, it, thank you. So I'm still, I'm still trying to correlate improvements to our building, which is what I see a fire suppression system doing in Station One, coming out of a wildland fire, even though it's excess or extra reimbursement for the time and labor that, and equipment that went to fight these fires. So Mayor, may I direct a question to our finance officer?
Yes.
So Pauline, when it comes to utilizing funds, is there any restrictions on this wildland fund? Or is it basically just called the name Wild Land Fund, but it can be used to purchase anything? There's no restrictions on what these dollars are used for?
Really, the restrictions right now are just that it goes to the fire department to purchase things that, like Chief Multivern said, would normally be purchased through the general fund. This, this was established for that purpose, so it wasn't getting lost anymore. So they didn't have to come and increase their budgets periodically. It's also supposed to help offset some of the expenses that we actually do incur for the staff time and the, that when they're gone. But they take care of that at the end of the year typically, during the end-of-the-year supplement. So there's still money there to cover our costs, and whatever's left over, they've always used for equipment or improvements.
So in our budgetary process, and I'm sorry, Mayor, the clock wasn't started on me, so I'm pretty, probably pretty close to my five minutes. But in the budgetary process, Pauline, my main ques, now that we're getting down to this, is the wildland fund an enterprise fund so that it is managed by the departments and the city council doesn't get, doesn't really see in the budget system how much is really there, how much is budgeted, and what the reserves are? Or is it part of our budget that the public sees during the general fund budget portion?
We typically do not establish a budget through the wildland fire fund at the begin, for each year, because we don't know how often we'll get called out and how much we'll get reimbursed. We don't know if it's going to be a dry year or where there's a lot of fires, or if it's, they're going to be a wet year with few fires. So we typically have not budgeted anything out of there. The money has been there. It shows up on your treasurer's report every month. It is not an enterprise fund, and quite honestly, when we do our annual report, it gets combined with the general fund for reporting purposes. But that's, that's how it's, where it's at right now.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure the city's not getting in hot fire water, making sure that we're spending out of correct funds. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and we have no motion on this item. Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number forty-eight, resolution number two-zero-one-six-dash-zero-four-zero, amending certain fees to be charged in two thousand and sixteen for various licenses, permits, and applications. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate, number one, on this, that Chief Multivern answered my questions as far as the ambulance fees. And so I was just going to reiterate what he had told me and let me know. And then that was the correction for the fees for the ambulance services. The fees aren't being adjusted, and they were being billed per event and per hour as listed here. This was more an administrative fix on the fees to, to allocate or to specify what the, what the charge was. But I did have a couple other questions, Mayor, if I can ask Mr. Dale Tech to start with?
Go ahead.
I gotta find it here first. Okay, so Dale, it looks like the, for the permit side of this, and I think this falls within the permit side of it, it, it looks like the fees were just switched for the evacuation in concrete and asphalt versus evacuation not paved in the public right away. Was that just miswritten the first time?
What page are you?
I'm sorry, page twenty-one? Right at the top, right underneath installation permit. I mean, it just, it literally looks like those two categories were just flip-flopped.
Yeah, that's correct. I believe that was to correct an issue that we had before. As you see, one was in concrete or asphalt, and the other was in non-paved or gravel. It's much cheaper to do it in gravel. That's why they were switched.
So, were these fees actually charged out before the incorrect schedule?
Yes, they were per ordinance, yes.
All right, thank you. So, that's good that we're fixing that. And then the other one, I'm just a little curious, because the hydrant administration deposit fee jumped three times the amount?
Because the actual replacement cost of the hydrant is fifteen hundred dollars.
And is that new, or was the city just supplementing any type of replacement?
The city was supplementing any type of replacement that came along, if there were any deposits that were not refunded. I don't believe that there were, but in case that there was, the city would have been out a thousand dollars.
Okay. And how often does that one happen?
We rent a number of meters throughout the year, hydrant meters throughout the year. To my knowledge, very rarely do any of them come up missing or damaged beyond repair.
And these hydrant meters, I'm trying to refresh my memory, it's for developments? When they, they set up these, and then they're charged the water fees that come out of the hydrant during their development, or washout of equipment?
Typically, it's a contractor that's doing, that needs bulk water. What they'll do is hook up to a hydrant, so they can fill like a tanker on the back of a truck. So, it's to meter that usage.
All right, thank you. And then, Mayor, may I, may I ask Mr. Bigler from Parks and Recreation a couple of questions?
Yes.
And I thank the council members for bearing with me, but I just want to, whenever we change the fees, and if they're significant, I just want to make sure that the public has enough information to know that they're coming. So, you know what, Jeff, now that I've called you, I think it's the landfill, so I think I'm going to go back to Mr. Dale Tack. Sorry about that. Dale?
No problem.
Mayor, may I switch back to Dale, please?
Yes, you may, in a minute and twenty seconds or less.
Thank you. I think this will clarify it, or I can get it within that time. So, Dale, in here, it looks like a three-hundred gallon container was added to the fee schedule for our refuge pickup?
That's correct.
Is that residential, or is it multi-residential, or, I mean, like me, as a single-family dwelling, can I now ask for a three-hundred gallon container?
You can, but do you want to pay forty-six dollars a month for that?
Wow, I may have a lot of stuff I want to throw out.
I'm sorry, I was trying to interject a little humor there, but it's for multi-residential units.
It's for multi-residential, right.
I think you succeeded. It was a little humor.
Well, that's the main reason I was asking, only because what, looking at that, it falls into the single fam-- it looks like it falls in within the single-family residential, so I just wanted to make, that's more of a multi, multi-family unit?
That's correct.
Joint one, okay, thank you. And then, let's see. And then, the only other one were, was, nope, I think that was it. I had the other one answered. Thank you, Mayor, for humoring me tonight.
Okay, go to John Roberts now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask Mr. Tack a question?
Yes, you may.
Amanda missed one. I just thought I'd bring it up. I was curious why dead animals was dropped half, halfway, so.
What was dropped is, it was one dollar per dead animal under two hundred pounds, and we decided that we don't get a lot of dead animals that are declared under two hundred pounds, so we're not collecting any fees from it anyway, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tack. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, item number forty-eight needs a motion. Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're done with the consent calendar. Onto non-consent items, item sixty-one through one hundred and eleven. Open public comment now on item sixty-one through one hundred and eleven. Have a few speaker request forms. And just as a reminder, when I call your name, you approach the podium, you have three minutes to talk about the item of your choice. And we'll go first to Roland Hanson.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Hanson. I live in Elk Country Estates, a beautiful area. We pay an HOA fee of a hundred dollars a month that takes care of our lawn, sprinkling system, and snow removal. We go to Yuma, Arizona in the winter for approximately five to six months. While we're gone, the association takes care of the place as though we were there. Our taxes are current. We pay our utility bills in full as we leave them on. We pay a neighbor a hundred and twenty dollars to check the house once a week, to flush toilets, fill traps, check the heating system, and the general condition of the house. When we leave Yuma, we do the same. It is my understanding the city, the most patriotic city in the nation, may assess us fifty dollars if we are gone three months or longer. Welcome to Orwellian nineteen eighty-four. Never in my wildest dreams did I ever think I would have to pay my coming and going, which I believe is my God-given and constitutional right. Ron, you are my next-door neighbor. Are you going to turn me in if I'm gone for more than three months? And if you don't, are you compliant in a cover-up? This question is rhetorical. Is the city going to create a big brother to find weak criminals that do not comply with the city's right to know when we come and go? Questions. What is the estimated revenue? How many new employees will be needed to enforce the administration? And if you don't need any, then our employees are not working hard enough. What will be the penalty for non-compliance? What will prevent a decrease to two months and an increase of twenty, two hundred dollars, and so on and on? I don't care about the fifty dollars, but I do care about one of my freedoms being ended. I assure you, you will never get me to tell the government when or how long I will be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And now, we'll go to Jean Rhodes.
Hi, my name is Jean Rhodes. I understand Assistant Attorney Jess Rogers proposed a new ordinance, number six one two two, which would have anyone that owns a home and wants to leave for three months or longer, register and pay a fifty-dollar fee to the city. This was proposed due to the fact that the city has reoccurring code violations, and the city's maintenance liens were impossible or nearly impossible to collect, according to Richie Nordstrom. What makes you think that putting into effect a new ordinance will make it easier? The only people that will register and pay the fee are honest, law-abiding citizens. Assistant City Attorney Jess Rogers said if the property is taken care of, it should never come to the city's attention. Does that mean as long as I break any law and it doesn't come to the city's attention, it doesn't matter? That is not moral. The problem, as I see it, is you aren't enforcing the laws that are on the books. This seems to be a way to raise money for maintenance of the properties that aren't in compliance, since honest people will be like sheep and fill out the form and pay the fifty dollars. If a thousand people leave, there's fifty thousand dollars, not a bad return on your new ordinance, and if you need more than, then, if you need more, just change it two months or raise the fee or both. Once an ordinance is on the books, it is easy to change. Look at the taxes and what happens with them. Alderman woman Amanda Scott seems to understand that the ones who should have to register are the people that are in violation of the codes. It seems like at least one person in the Legal and Finance Committee was trying to stand up for Rapid City's citizens. Thank you, Amanda. Questions. What is the penalty if you don't pay fifty dollars and register with the city? Is it every three months, then another fifty dollars if I'm gone another three months? What if I come home after two months or my family comes over? How do I get my fifty dollars back? What do you do for my fifty dollars? Check my house, mow my lawn, shovel my snow? How do you enforce the ordinance? Do you contact the post office, track the cell phone, car GPS, license plates, nosy neighbor, or do we get an ankle bracelet or implanted chip? Yes, this sounds like science fiction, but every day it seems like those in authority try and take away another freedom. I was born in the United States of America. I've worked hard all of my life and tried to abide by the laws and be a good citizen. The last I knew, I didn't have to show a passport to leave a city, or county, or state in the USA, or register with the city and pay a fee. If this is passed, I refuse to pay the fee, and I refuse to register. Famous last words. This doesn't, this won't affect you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jafar Karam. I'm the Director of Corporate Affairs for Black Hills Corporation, and I live here in Rapid City, as well as work here for Black Hills Corporation. I'm here to address item number sixty-four, which is the Development Agreement, which will implement the creation of tax increment District Number Seventy-seven. And what that will do is it'll allow Rapid City to take advantage of a growth opportunity that we're excited to commit ourselves to here in Rapid City. You probably are familiar with the headquarters that we already have underway for our multi-state operations. We house approximately five hundred employees at that location today. We have the opportunity to build upon that, to finish out an additional one hundred and fifty spaces at that site, and create a minimum of fifty new jobs. Why are we doing this? It's because of the growth that we continue to experience as a company. And these, this corporate headquarters is providing services across our territories in eight different states for customers across those states, and yet we are continuing to commit ourselves to Rapid City, and we're excited about that prospect. We appreciate what the city has done, and we appreciate making Rapid City our home. We're also excited to be able to contribute to the economy here. The five hundred employees I talked about provide an estimated eighty-one million dollars in economic contributions to the local economy, and with the addition of at least fifty new employees, that's about eight point one million in additional economic investment in the community. So, again, this is for the Development Agreement. We appreciate your consideration in this step of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of our speaker request forms, so we'll close the public comment on these items, and we'll start off with item number sixty-one, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixty-one is the first reading of Ordinance Number Six One One Seven, an ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Bob Brandt for the rezoning from General Agricultural District to Office Commercial District for property generally described as being located at two thousand Promise Road. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion in a second to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number sixty-two is the second reading and recommendation of Ordinance Number Six One One Four regarding the Supplemental Appropriation Number Two for Fiscal Year 2016. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
Item number sixty-three is to approve the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number Six One Two Two, adopting Section sixteen point zero nine zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, requiring registration of vacant residential properties. I make a motion to send this back to staff with the input of a small group of city council members to kind of go back over this ordinance and really take a look at who we're trying to target.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to send this back to staff. And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Maybe. Oh, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely appreciate that motion. I was going to make the motion to deny initially, but I do understand that there is some, some need for something like this along the lines, but I definitely don't want to penalize folks like, that spoke earlier. Obviously, they are responsible homeowners, and I know they head south in the winter a lot, and we were very envious of that at times, but, and I know that you obviously take care of your, your place out there, so I do appreciate the fact we're going to take a look, have a look at this ordinance, because I don't think it's appropriate for everybody. Thank you.
Now, to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I think we have a legitimate problem. I just think trying to solve that legitimate problem, we, I learned a new term, I think we've created additional problems that are, we have unintended consequences of, of our actions here. So, I think, I think we need to get the foreclosure house deal wired down, and that's about it. So, I'll support these things.
Okay, now to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank you two for coming and speaking tonight. I think it was really important that you two showed up for this. I had some serious, serious concerns when I first saw this, and I've talked to a few of the council people about this, including Mr. Wyffenbach. I think that one of the things that this ordinance, the way it was right now, of not only, in my opinion, kind of stepping on your, your constitutional rights, but I think that also what this does is it creates a problem of where we're penalizing honest, tax-paying citizens, and we can't do that. And I'm not going to allow that. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming forward, letting your voices be heard, and I wish that more people would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks, folks, for coming in there to Mr. Hanson and Ms. Rhodes. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. It was one of those unintended consequences that was coming out of this, because my intent was to go after the financial institutions that were not paying what they needed to pay, and we were turning into a property management firm. So, again, my apologies as well. I can see where a simple amendment would take care of your issue, but let us get a chance to take a look at that and take another review. We also have another issue to address on this matter, and that has to do with an internal working environment condition that we have to settle and resolve as well. So, I'm very okay with that, going back to a committee to, to be reviewed. So, hopefully, we can get this corrected and what needs to be addressed in the future. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say, Ms. Rhodes, very well spoken, and if you ever decide to stick around and not snowbird, I think you'd be great on the city council.
Carla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I did hear from several constituents on this matter that we're in the same boat that you guys are in, that they're, they're snowbirds and want to go. I guess what I'm concerned about is the fact that you just announced your address and that you were gone six months out of the year. And I'm concerned a little bit about lists that may show up somewhere that would have these people listed as being gone for three or four months. So, that would be something that I would really want the ordinance to consider, how we're going to track this list, and where's it going to be housed, and could it be hacked, and people could find out who's gone. So, I can support Amanda Scott's suggestion on this, but I would like it to be somehow protected, a protected list. So, if, if we go ahead and do the vacancy thing, which I don't, I don't know if we should do that for the snowbirds, but I do have a situation in my neighborhood where a guy was gone all winter, and his house was broken into because he didn't make the proper arrangements for his air, his, you know, snow clearing and those kinds of things. So, it was an announcement that, you know, no one was there. So, it is a concern for the safety of neighborhoods when people do not go ahead and comply with those regulations. So, I'll still support this, you know, not for the people that are just being gone for the winter, but I do want to protect your information if somehow we do go ahead with this ordinance. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to say briefly that I had hoped we were going to get the amendment tonight, because I agree that I think it could have been easily amended, and that's some of the conversation that I had as well, because I do want to see what I've called them before, and I, with some of the other council members I've had conversations with on this, some of these, and a lot of them are rentals that are vacant, but they're cancers in a lot of neighborhoods in Rapid City. They're eyesores. They make it difficult for people who are selling their homes if They're eyesores, they make it difficult for people who are selling their homes if this, if their neighbors are these vacant homes, makes it very hard for those people to sell those homes, it hurts the values of those neighborhoods. So I'm glad that we're keeping this alive and that we can send it back. I thought we could do it tonight, but we do need to target these, these cancers, we do need to eradicate city of these cancers, and we need to put more teeth into code enforcement to be able to do that. I yield.
Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I definitely would mow your yard if the weeds got long. Don't think that's gonna happen. And I appreciate you showing up tonight, because sometimes I think that it helps bring some reality, the people that call me all the time, you're not the only folks that call me. I have, this to me is, is the proverbial nose of the camel under the tent. It's going to lead to a road that we don't want to travel, and, but on the other hand, I don't want to, I don't want to kill the messenger on this deal, because I believe that Barb's group over there in code enforcement has their hearts in the right place. I think this, this amendment, this ordinance was misguided, though. It's, it's, we have ordinances on the book right now, we just need to enforce them. We need, if she needs the tools and the utilities, or the funding, or whatever that case may be, then that's what we need to understand. So I would challenge my colleagues here to take some time, spend it with Barb, find out exactly what she's trying to achieve, where her goal is, and then we can help her achieve that goal. But this is, this, this ordinance of registering people is, this is the foothold for what I know that some particular people on this council want to do, that I'm not gonna let happen as long as I sit here, and that's, that's registering people who rent properties and those types of things. We have ordinances, we're not gonna make an ordinance that says, "Don't break an ordinance." Makes no sense. We have them, if, if Barb and the code enforcement people need more tools, and those tools are funding, or enforcement mechanisms, because code enforcement is a typical type of thing, it's reactionary at this point, but she's also, I know, working on a formula to help go through the city in a methodical way to educate people and come back and do reinforcements, so I have no, no inkling of, I'm not gonna support this in any manner coming forward, so, thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the concerns I had of Ms. Drew brought up too, because I hate the fact of having a list out there of people that are gone three to six months, and all of a sudden the criminals know who's gone and where they live, and here's, you know, what kind of liability can that possibly put us at the city into? Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question to our city attorney, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Joel, if this ordinance went through, which I hope it doesn't, and I, anyway, if it did go through, is there any way, because of open records laws, that we could hide that list?
Yes, I, I believe we could, because there are protections for, like, we already have people's personal information on our utility billing accounts and things, and, and personal information and things like that is exempted from the open records.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And back to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got to reel this back in. We're getting way out of bounds here, what we're, my intent here on this is, is that this would be, and I was gonna follow your lead, Alderman Laurenti, about making a brief amendment to it, that I think will fix all these issues and will not become public, anyway, and since this is, we've got a lot of houses out, out there anyway, and squatters are already entering them in, in those abandoned houses, and that's what the issue is I'm trying to fix. Once we get those houses addressed on it, people already know where they're at now, so, and if they, it doesn't take too much of a, an expert to find out what houses are vacant and have been vacant for some time, because right now, we're, we're boarding them up, and so it doesn't take that much skill to find out what houses they are that are, that are abandoned, and that's my intent, is just to work with abandoned houses, and if, if they've been filing a complaint on them, then, then we can address it at that point, but all of this other extraneous stuff, I think is getting way out of bounds, and I just want to get it reeled back in to reality. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to return this item to staff. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Onto item number sixty-four, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixty-four is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign Development Agreement for the Tax Increment District Number Seventy-Seven between Black Hills Power, Inc., and the City of Rapid City, South Dakota. I will, um, release, or I'm done, because I'm gonna vote no on this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Go to Ron Weifenbach.
Is there two parts to this, Mr. Mayor? Is this?
Not that I know of.
This, this, okay.
This is for just the, just the developers agreement.
Oh, so it's beyond the TIF part, then, so, okay. So if we don't, we've already approved the, the tax district, now we're just looking at the developers agreement? Is that correct? Okay. I got it. Well, I had a little information that I, one of the things I'll agree with my colleagues is that a TIF, a TIF, the processes that we use to, to vet the TIFs and, and, and how they're used is, is, is basically zero to none. We'd had conversations earlier about getting approved from the TIF, TIF board, and then from, to the Planning Commission to us, and in that timeframe, there's, there's things that need to be vetted, they aren't being vetted properly. We've spent some time with the Sioux Falls people, myself and two of the other colleagues up here, and we're just absolutely amazed with the, with the efforts they put forward. So what we rely on is the information that we get and we gather, so I put together a little whiteboard here, I'm not sure if everybody can see it, and I'll kind of talk a little bit about it, because I've had a lot of my constituents ask me, why that, would I ever want to, to help Black Hills Energy with, with the Tax Increment District? And one of the things I gotta say is that the rules have changed. This is an economic development TIF. It has little to do with blighted area. It has all to do with the economic development that'll be created, and I, I kind of did a little thing here, it says, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what Black Hills Energy will pay in taxes on this building. That's above and beyond what's being paid right now. Of that share, the City of Rapid City gets eighty-one thousand dollars. This TIF will pay off in approximately nine years with, using a five and a half percent interest rate, which I think they'll do better. That is a total cost to the city that they, not money out of their pocket, money they just won't collect, for seven hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. It will create off the top, four, four point two million dollars in annual payroll with the first fifty jobs they create. The building is gonna be expanded to allow them to create another hundred jobs, which is the potential of them bringing from Omaha and Denver, and my constituents consistently, and these people up here consistently tell you, the citizens of Rapid City, that they're gonna create jobs, yet I don't see it happen. There's some times when the citizens and us have to stand up and say, you know what, this makes sense. I wish that there was a lot better information, but this is the information I'm giving you, and these are approximate numbers that I've drawn from what I get and why I'm voting this direction, because I've had a lot of questions about it. So the other hundred jobs is gonna be six point five million dollars in annual revenue once those jobs are created, and what, mind you, we're competing against Denver, Colorado, and Omaha, Nebraska, two large cities that want these jobs to stay in their city. Rapid City wants these jobs. That's a total of ten point seven million dollars for an investment of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. I want to put it in perspective for you, the Civic Center, when we were looking at building, rebuilding the Civic Center, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for a plan, a plan that told us not to build it, we voted to, to try to do it anyway, at a cost of three hundred and eighty million dollars for two hundred jobs, for four point two million dollars in annual payroll, three hundred and eighty million dollars. Seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for four point two, for sure, up to another six point five. I'm just taking this time for the people that are in my ward to understand, I don't take these decisions lightly, I do my homework the best I can, I wish that we had a better vetting process, we don't right now, I believe we can get there. Thank you.
Now onto Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and, sorry, I had to rethink and gather my thoughts after that, the fee schedule that I kind of expanded on. So getting back to this one, the, the only reason that I am voting against the developers agreement is, and just to reiterate, when this idea for a TIF for Black Hills Corp. came before the TIF Committee, I sat on the TIF Committee at that time, and the TIF Committee kind of is like the first, you know, throwing it against the board and see what sticks, and see if it makes sense. That's what the TIF Committee does, and when the idea was brought before us on the TIF Committee, I was, it sounded like it was a viable option, especially with the economic side of it. The reason I changed my vote between sitting on the TIF Committee, from the process that it went through, through the Planning Commission, and then through the TIF creation, and it also, also came to city council, but the reason I changed my vote on this is that we also had some other topics of conversation, and the Black Hills Corp. office, I'm all for the jobs that are being brought forward, instead of extending out and bringing it in piecemeal, if they can go ahead and build out the offices and bring in these extra hundred and fifty jobs, we get that extra income, as Alderman Weifenbach with his whiteboard and his numbers, he indicated, it, that the sooner that you start that, the better invest, return on investment that you get. But in talking from the TIF Committee to the actual TIF that came before the city council, the city council has other options as well, and there were some other options discussed, but the TIF application came before, before any of the other options that the city could have gone through for economic growth, whether it was a capture fund, or taking a look at other resources that we could have paid outright, or lent the money, borrowed it, or whatever. There were some other options being discussed, and they did not have time to come to fruition because this TIF application came in. And then the other reasons that I had concerns for it is that this one is so different because Black Hills Corp. is not taxed locally. I do have a concern that it is centrally taxed, and my understanding of being centrally taxed is that they pay tax money that goes to the state, and then the state, through some formula, divvies it back out. By Black Hills Corp. doing a TIF, they had to ask permission from the state capital in order to get those funds reallocated to pay off an existing TIF first, before then it goes back and starts paying off this TIF. So just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate, I'm not against TIFs, I just think they need to be well thought out, as Alderman Weifenbach pointed out, and just to show that I think many council members do see individual TIFs differently. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think everybody clearly understands where I stand on this particular TIF and every other TIF that's come across this dais. The fact of the matter is, there are better options. We've talked about them, and talked about them, and talked about them, but there are just too many people that are currently in government, elected and not elected, that don't want to see it change. Truthfully, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Mr. Weifenbach talked about, that they're going to be paying, and the city share of the, which is the eighty-one thousand, without the TIF, we would be getting nine years earlier. That's the truth, and to believe that Black Hills Energy is not going to do this because it's of benefit to them is drinking some kind of Kool-Aid. I'm sorry, but they are going to do this because it's good for them, and I'm, I'm glad that they are doing this because it's good for them. They're a publicly held corporation, they would be held very accountable for not doing what's good for their corporation. So, again, tying these jobs to this TIF is a misnomer, it's misleading, and it's not accurate, because Black Hills Energy is going to bring these jobs to Rapid City from other places because it is of benefit for them, and they should do that. That's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, because it makes the corporation healthier, and they're a corporation that lives here in Rapid City, so I support that. What I don't support is a TIF that doesn't need to occur, because this corporation has the wherewithal to complete, start, and do this development, which they're already doing before we gave the final here, and before we did the actual approval of the TID. They were already building. So nobody out there should believe that this was, was not going to happen without the TIF. That whole condition of but for the TIF, this would not have happened, that's not the case here, that's part of what Mr. Weifenbach's talking about. That process is completely broken, because it never would have made of past the but for, if that was a stringent, well thought out, put together part of the process, this would have never made it, because it's going to happen because it is good for the health of this corporation, and I will not support putting this eighty-one thousand dollars for the next nine years on the rest of the taxpayers, because that's who will be paying, who will be supporting all of those services that would have been paid by that eighty-one thousand dollars that the city was going to receive. It puts great pressure on the general fund, and we get more taxes, we get, we increase taxes, we take a CPI, because the general fund gets a lot of pressure put on it by these TIFs, so I will not support it, I will not support any, any other TIF. I'm hoping after this election that we get some common sense, that we get some common sense here on this council that will come up with something better for the taxpayer. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very little of that I agree with. The last statement I do agree with, I think there is something better out there, and I think we can work at that. You know, I find this amazing, because if we'd have had three million dollars, and I see Ben Snow smiling out there, in economic development funds, and we'd have just gave it to Black Hills Corp., nobody may have even ever brought this up or known about it. We, we give incentives all the time, and we should give incentives for people to do business in Rapid City. One of the best things I like about this developers agreement is in the, the second, and you'll have to excuse me, because my computer went dead, it's in the second item, very bottom line, where it says, "They have three years to create these fifty jobs, or they don't have to pay," or, "We don't have to give them the TIF." So we know they are gonna create a minimum of fifty jobs. We know that that's gonna be between four and, do you mind if I ask, Mr. DeVar? These fifty jobs are gonna have an economic impact of, what, what's the payroll on that gonna be exactly? I've heard a couple of different...
If I may address the question, okay.
Please.
Thank you. Our economic model that we run has at about eight point one million dollars, that's more than just the payroll.
Yes.
And payroll is, you know, would be an estimate right now, based on the average salary and, and benefits of the job.
Thank you very much. So eight point one million dollars times nine years is seventy-two million dollars for seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that is one hell of an investment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Roberts, for bringing this back to the developer agreement, because I thought we were starting to get into the area, TIF and TIDs, and I thought that horse had already left the barn already, so thank you for bringing this back, Alderman Roberts. So I, about the only clarification I need, and from Pauline, if you can help me out a little bit, on the first section has to do with the developer agreement, and the grant system, part of that, how that works, and then the principal balance and that completion of the, let's see, how's it say it here? It, it, it's comprised of the, the principal balance and then the interest on that. Can you explain a little bit how that grant part of that works in Section One?
I will do my best. So in a normal TID that you guys see before you, you have project costs outlined per project type, and then also interest that we can pay based on their borrowings. Well, in this case, we are doing an outright grant, instead of saying, okay, you have to do a street, or you have to do a streetlights, that type of thing, so we're doing an economic development grant, which, as Alderman Weifenbach alluded to, the rules have changed, so that's acceptable through the TIDs now, and so that grant amount is based on the cost that they anticipate for those extra hundred and fifty, fifty jobs at three point two million, roughly. So the grant will be the three million, two hundred thousand, an odd change, and then we will pay them interest at the five and a half percent up until that three point two million dollars is paid off, just like in any other TID. We only pay what has been incurred up until that time. This was agreed to because they are taking a risk, they are doing the investment upfront, and also the original, at first, the monies will go to pay off the overlapping TIDs, the Hague's TID is one of those, is the TID that I'm referring to. The Hague's TID is one of those, is the TID that I'm referring to. And so there's some risk there because they only get the money at the tail end once the Hague TIF is paid off. So because they're taking a risk, that's why we built in the interest for them as well. But again, if we pay off that 3.2 million dollar grant before the end of the 20 years, they will not get that full 2.8 million in interest.
Thank you. One more question, if I may. And then in reference to the central assessed taxes that go on with that, you don't have anything to do with that and that goes over to the county auditor to begin with? That's step one?
No, my understanding is they have to declare to the state what the value of their property and their, all of their infrastructure is for that specific location. The state will then create a special assessment district for that location for Black Hills Corp. only. The rest of it will continue on being taxed the way it is now. From there, I've gotten conflicting statements as to what happens. My first email from Julie Pearson at the auditor's office said that they, the state just assigns a value and then it's taxed normally. And maybe Jeff could clarify if he knows more about this than I do. I was always under, I didn't know where the money went with centrally assessed properties, but Julie thought originally that it would then get allocated out to the taxing entities. However, she has since changed that and has given me a name of somebody to contact to clarify that. I have not had the opportunity to do, do so yet to make sure I know how that all works on that end.
So primarily...
Joel is indicating that he might know something too.
And so primarily, the, that's the developers' responsibility, not us.
Correct. They would have to do that.
Yes, and I'll yield to Mr. Lundy.
Thank you. And that's what I was going to point out is the risk on the, the central assessment and the creation of the special, special district is really on Black Hills Corp. If this, if the Department of Revenue doesn't follow through or if, if Black Hills Corp. has a dispute with the state over the value that the Department of Revenue assigns to that special district, through this agreement, that's addressed and it's, that is totally on them. So if for some reason there isn't sufficient revenue to pay this out through the creation of the special district, they're taking all that risk through this agreement.
And I think that's vitally important, that all the risk is on the developer, not on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is pretty topical since tomorrow's election day and I guarantee you, every single flyer out there says create jobs, make Rapid City a better place to live. And that's exactly what this is all about up here, as far as I'm concerned. You know, big picture, I don't care that, once again, this corporation is getting a tax benefit or a credit. We're not writing a check up here, we're not taking your money out of your account and writing it out and saying, here's $6 million, go spend it. We're just doing it against future revenue that's encouraging them to build. And I guarantee you, they have the option of going other places. It's a very large corporation, well over a billion dollars worth of revenue a year and Rapid City represents about 5% of their overall revenue. So them to stay in Rapid City is a huge deal. I really appreciate the fact that their board made that decision and I think it's one of those things where we, we need to stand up here and what we're saying is end up in the paper and the news and every place else and we need to make sure that when we talk, as far as I'm concerned, if we're really serious about creating jobs, we need to make sure we always try to keep a very positive, positive message. And I think, you know, obviously we need to be prudent with taxpayers' dollars, but like Mr. Roberts says, we do give incentives, but that's, that's economic development, that's not Rapid City, that's a different corporation and that's a different entity, excuse me, if you will. And they don't hand out checks for $3 million very often, if ever, I doubt. So I think it's very, very important that we do this, keep a positive message about coming to Rapid City, we're here to, we're here to open the doors for you any way we can. You're going to bring high-paying jobs like this especially? We'll bring them all, we'll take anything you got. And we'll try to do our best to make sure it's a good place for you to do business and hopefully works out for you in the long run because people can go anywhere they want these days. I mean, they don't need to be in one certain location unless they have a mine they need to get into. They, they, with the world is connected the way it is, they can choose and pick and choose pretty, pretty, you know, at will where they want to be and the fact that they're coming to Rapid City, South Dakota is a big deal. So once again, just appreciate your, your folks doing that, making that decision. I have zero problems with his vote. I'm 100% behind it and thank you very much.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Much of what I would say would be redundant, so I'll avoid that. I do want to thank Black Hills Corp. for, for doing it right and going through this process and utilizing this tool to work. I mean, we've seen some things recently, I think we're going to be seeing some things coming back up where the tool is not working and that's creating some challenges for us. But one thing I don't think is, is widely known and I just want to, I want to commend Black Hills Corp. because they don't just invest in a community, they invest their human capital into the community. They say, hey, go out, get involved, join boards, join committees, make this community better. And that's something you cannot put a dollar value on, you just can't. I mean, it's, you know, millions of, of human hours and, and energy and effort going into making the community better. And I think that's just something that is far too often overlooked. So I want to publicly thank you all for, for the effort that you put in. It's not just about what's in the best interest of your company. I mean, I really have seen a lot of you roll up your sleeves, a lot of you sitting out in the audience right now and, and invest in other ways and so thank you.
Thank you. Ron Weifenbach for a minute and 10.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my, my whiteboard was not anything to try to convince somebody up here how to vote. It was simply for my constituents to ask me questions that I can't get to all the time. That's the way I see it, that's why I voted the way I do. I don't take this lightly. This is going to create some good jobs for Rapid City, it's going to, it's going to be good for economic development to understand. The state figured, they changed the law, they said it was important for cities in South Dakota to be able to compete with economic development tools that are in Omaha and Nebraska. We've used some of the other economic tools, it's funny that everybody talks about them, we've used them in the past and if they want history on them, we can show you the companies that took checks from Rapid City and never even opened the door. And if you do, if you do abatements, you get no taxes. So if there's something out there that I don't know about, show it to me. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
I don't want to be left out. You know, you know, on the agenda tonight, I mean, it's basically the developers' agreement. I mean, that the TIF portion's been, that horse has been beat to death. I'm, I'm going to vote for this and I voted for it when it, when it was, came up to be the TIF portion and I also want to thank Black Hills Corp. for their commitment to the area. But, you know, in a perfect world, you know, and I'll take, I'll hold it to blame that this is like this. What I envisioned was, you know, we, we look up on the Catron and 16 and, and we had a fore, we were forewarned that there's going to, over a five-year period, there's going to be about $150 million worth of assessed valuation built up there. And in my, the way I envisioned it in a perfect world, and I did a drowsy job as the council president of Sault Ste., is, is, I really want to give these guys cash. I mean, and I still, I'm going to vote for this, but to me, if we can come up with cash over the next three years through opportunity, I think it's crazy to spend long-term debt on jobs. I, I think we need to go out and get jobs, but I think long-term debt. And, and I, I thought with Black Hills Corp.'s commitment to that corner and our commitment for $3 million to create these jobs, I, I thought that that was sufficient dedication to that quadrant of the city and that, and that the water slide development could just happen. Because what I envisioned is, is that then the city drawing a big circle and going down Sharon Lake Road and Catron and create our own TIF because if this works, I mean, think about it, we're going to, we got, these guys are going to move 50 people here from what, Source Gas or something, they're going to create 50 real nice paying jobs, where are they going to live? We don't have anybody developing lots. The hospital's talking about a big expansion. So what we have to, what are we going to do if this works? Well, I, in my mind, you're going to see development on Sharon Lake Road. Well, the Ham Land or the Borg Meyer Land or, or the Dr. Bent Land is going to develop and it's going to cause infrastructure bottlenecks that we're going to be looked at to solve. And the only source of revenue we have is the CIP. So guess what? The guys in Ward Three are going to have an emergency because that portion of town is growing and they're going to rob the rest of our CIP funds because, because that's the only source. Every time somebody's up for election, we go through budget, we go, we need another source of revenue for infrastructure. We just had a gift looking at, looking at a gift horse in the mouth and we just, in my mind, and I'll take the blame for it, we just didn't execute properly. So I'm going to support this, I'm going to try real hard in the next budget. I really think we need to have a commitment to, to pay this off and, and not turn this $3.2 million commitment to jobs into $6 million. And the reason it's so high is because it overlaps with the Hague TIF. I mean, this is build that out. That's why the interest on these two, the water slide TIF and this are so darn high because this money sits there for so darn long because we're paying off that other TIF that doesn't have any assessed value. So anyway, I'll, I'm going to support this. Thank you, Black Hills Corp. You guys are doing something that nobody else in town has the wherewithal to do. Build a $50 million facility and, and create jobs that, you know, new jobs, people come to town at, at 80-some thousand dollars a year average. So thank you.
Item number 64, motion is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
What did you say? Two noes. Motion passes. Item number 65, let's go to Charity Doyle, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 65 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc. for Andrew J. Severson for preliminary subdivision plan on Pineview Terrace, generally described as being located east of Park Drive. Make a motion to approve with stips.
Aye.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number 66 is a request by Travis Swift for Volt Properties for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at 1714 Creek Drive. I will make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion and a second on this item. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
And item number 67 is a request by Bill Freitag for preliminary subdivision plan for properly being generally described as being located south of Country Road and west of Dias Avenue. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, motion and a second received. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. One, one no on that item. So motion passes. Now on to item 68 through 110, which are all alcohol beverage license application reissuances. Prior to this meeting, I consulted with the police chief to find out if there were any concerns within these reissuances and there are not. So I would entertain a motion to approve all of these and feel free to remove any of them you wish. Okay, a motion and a second to approve items 68 through 110. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, now on to item 110A. And this is the neon sign discussion. The item being proposed or the, the feeling here is that these signs need to be moved by the 15th. Apparently their storage location's going to be used for something else and they need to be moved with the aid of a professional sign company, which is estimated to be $5,000 or less. So let's hear Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Kestloff.
Okay.
Do you know how long these signs have been in your possession? How long they've been in our possession? Your group's possession? They've been in possession for a while. Like 15 years, 10 years? Oh, I couldn't tell you, I'm sorry. Okay. How about, you know, you said there was a possibility of selling them, how, how much was the valuation on that that you think? Well, at the, a rate that they have to get out of there, the, the money that we would have to get from them would not be what they were worth because of the time limit of having to get rid of them. So, so are they worth $5,000 apiece, $3,000 apiece, more? I mean, what kind of collection are we looking at here? Sorry, I need some help with the figures.
That's really a tough question to accurately answer.
The value could go anywhere from $3,000 to $25,000 per sign, depending on the buyer.
Well, I, I think it's always unfortunate whenever we sell part of our history and I am a particular fan of neon signs. And once these are gone, they're, they're irreplaceable. And I know you have some plan that working and looking at the Civic Center as a forward location for these so they could be enjoyed by everyone. And so I would be in favor of, of coming up with the money to help you move the signs. I understand the storage is paid for that you have lined up. And I know we can't make a decision tonight, but I just want you to know that I would support helping with the moving fees.
Okay, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I also ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Jean, yeah, sorry. So on this, in listening to your request and the reasons for it, it sounds like you, and I'm saying you, not the, not historic, your group, but you have a vision of them being in the Civic Center. One of my questions is, how viable of an option is that? Has there been any meetings with the Civic Center Board of, of displaying them? I mean, is there a timeline? Is... We've had several, several meetings with Civic Center Board and they're not ready to make a decision because of what's happening with the Civic Center plans. I'm not opposed to helping out the Historic Preservation Group with the money to move these signs. My concern is more that this is a knee-jerk reaction to move these signs just so that they can collect dust for many, many more years and we may have to move them two or three more times before, before they find a resting home. So I have a great concern that, that either they do need to be sold or they need to be, a plan needs to be hatched here in, a viable plan for what they're going to be used for. Because there's not too many places that you could actually display these signs for everyone to enjoy. Correct. So I'm, I'll yield the floor. Can I have, no, okay.
Richie Nordstrom, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission and, and I don't get involved too much with signage at this point, but Jean, if you would take consideration for asking the sign companies to send us back something in writing, that they will not do that, I would appreciate it if they will not do it because you indicated that to me that they would not move the help or assist in the sign moving.
It's very difficult to get someone to move them for free. That's what we're up against and I don't blame them.
And if you, if I could get something in writing from them and stating how much the estimate would be, et cetera. And so I have something to work with. And then this Wednesday, we have the Historic Preservation Commission and the Sign Board also meeting at, pretty close to the same timeframe. So with that in consideration, would, that information, with your information, bringing that to those meetings, that would be helpful in assisting you on that. So that way we don't have, in my mind right now, I'd like to try other alternatives besides using out of our undesignated cash or something along that, contingency fund like that first. And then if I have to, then, then I'll go to looking at the contingency fund for it. And then the last question I've got for you is the storage on it. Have you got, confirmed that we could store them at the Civic Center's storage area on North 7th? Or where are we storing them?
That's true. The storage area on Adams and North Street.
Adams, we already have one sign there.
Yeah, the old JDC, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so you've got that confirmed?
Yes, it's confirmed.
Okay. So that, thank you, Mayor. That addresses all my concerns.
Okay, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kestloff, if you could, you know, entertain me a bit, but I'm really questioning this one, but from a city standpoint. My question to you is, how long have we known these needed to be moved?
The city?
No, how long have you known or the group?
We've known that they've needed to be moved for about a little less than a year and we've tried and tried to get a, a way to get them moved and, and have been meeting with the Civic, Civic Center Board and hopefully getting them put in the Civic Center. Finally got the storage area to have them moved into. But it's just, the, what it takes to move them with the neon tubing and all that and the size of them, it has just been prohibitive for us finding some other way than a...
prohibitive for us finding some other way than a professional mover.
So, if they're to be moved or sold, who would sell them? If they were gonna be sold today, who would be the rightful owner and would receive the proceeds?
Historic Rapid City.
Has Historic, has that group considered selling them?
It's very difficult to sell one part of your history for another, and it's, we don't wanna sell them, but at some point around the fifteenth, we might be forced to. And we'd lose a part of Rapid City's history.
Well, I don't know that we would lose it. It would be somewhere, but I just don't know that this is the place for the city to use the taxpayers' money for some neon signs. It just doesn't seem to fit for me, but I'm gonna, I'm willing to listen here. I don't think we have a motion on the floor yet to send this back. I think we need to do that if we're considering doing something here, but I honestly don't know that I would support it. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is definitely an interesting one. Jean, you don't mind if I ask you a few questions, do you? We've spoke briefly on this. Are these signs insured right now?
No.
No? Okay. One of the things, Amanda asked me to ask that, and I think that, if I'm thinking why she probably asked it, my guess is, once we store them, if they're not insured, they become our liability.
Or moving them.
Or, yeah, or moving them, but that would be your responsibility with moving them. But I do agree that this is something that is a huge piece of our history in Rapid City. I can remember growing up, you know, before the flood especially, and the neon that was in Rapid City, and the signage that was in Rapid City. And we've lost a lot of that, and I think that, you know, an investment of $5,000 is really not much of an investment, if it's something that we can do to help our history, and especially the people that have lived here a long time, that don't wanna see all of our history gone. And I do hope that eventually, the Civic Center would be a place to put them. You know, it's unfortunate that, and I believe maybe even a year ago, you had brought this up with me, that they had to be moved then, but it's too bad that we got so close to the wire. It would've been a lot easier if we'd had, you know, thirty days, or sixty days, or whatever. And I know you, you, and I know Bill, and I know you've been working diligently on this, and I will support this. It is such a minimal amount of money that, for what we're gonna get, it's a good investment for the city, I think. You know, we, we invest in art, we invest in, you know, we, we put a lot of money in different things in Rapid City, but our history is one of the things that we don't put a tremendous amount of money in. So, and I don't know what question you're wanting to answer, but go ahead, Jean. I see your finger going up.
Once our history is gone, it's gone forever, and I agree with you. We put money into art, but this history, it's important. It is a gift that we give to future generations, and it is for the public. It's not, you know, not to be in a private place where only certain people can see, and having it in the Civic Center would be a huge draw to people going into the Civic Center and be able to see these items from our history.
And a lot of people would have no idea of what the Tip Top Motel was, or what the Canyon Lake Club was, or what the, you know, and just on a personal note, the very first paying job I ever had was at the Tip Top Motel. So, anyway, but...
Maybe it's a way to learn.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Ms. Kestloff, if I may.
Yes, you may.
So, we're talking history. I don't know if this is a silly question, but has the Journey Museum been approached? Is that a facility that could house these types of signs? I mean...
They are too large.
They're too large for the Journey?
They're too large. The way that you display these signs is flat on the ceiling, so you can look up and see them, and there's just, there's not enough room in the Journey to put all of them. Twenty feet, fifteen by twenty feet, it would be just sign after sign after sign through the Journey.
All right, thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd, I'd make a motion to move this discussion to, I think it would be a legal and finance meeting.
I'd prefer, I'd prefer that we leave this discussion motionless, and so that we can understand how the council feels about it, because there are other, other options for getting this done, I believe.
Okay. If that's the case, then, I mean, I'd be, I'd be personally willing to write a check for some amount of money if it came down to that. I just, I, I think there's some history there, but I guess, no, I'm not gonna write a $5,000 check, but, but I'm, my point, though, is the Historic Society willing to turn over title on these to the city of Rapid City? I mean, if they pay to move them, it sounds like you want the city to preserve them into perpetuity, so, I mean, I don't know exactly how that, that works. So, Mr. Mayor, that would be my question for Jean.
And I would have to discuss that with my board.
Okay. I mean, I think that would be important, as you talk about the storage and things like that, if we're gonna store them and they get ruined, so, yeah, thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and that, that's, Alderman Wyffenbach is going where the last questions in my mind for tonight are going. What kind of MOU does Historic Preservation have with the city of Rapid City? Any, any agreements, or?
No, we're, we're Historic Rapid City, which is a nonprofit. We don't.
There's no MOU agreement with the city for any type of financing, or agreement for taking care of these signs, or anything else?
No, and that, that can be discussed, I, you know.
Thank you, Jean. So, that is my concern as well, is, is, I know $5,000, when you're looking at a city budget, doesn't seem like a lot of money, but basically, I'm trying to wade through in my mind, a private entity, even if it's nonprofit, it's a private entity with no relationship to the city, tied to the city, asking for city funds to do something for property that they own, not the city. And that's what I'm listening to up here, and I'm trying to work, work my way through. How can the city council say yes to give money to a private entity coming forward and asking for funds, unless we do have an MOU or some, you know, I mean, that's where I was going, Jean, with the concept of, your vision is to have them hanging in the Civic Center, but the Civic Center is a city-owned building, and so there's been no real movement in any type of agreement to get that there. So, I, I'm just having a hard time, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, but I'm having a hard time trying to wrap around that, that this is something that the city should even get involved with at this point. So, I guess I'm really undecided. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, back to John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And this is a little bit out of the norm, but it's not unprecedented. I know in 2011, the first year I was on the city council, the city council gave a home and a lot to a nonprofit in North Rapid, and it, it ended up being a good partnership because instead of the city having to tear down that property, the nonprofit tore it down for us. So, it isn't completely out of the norm. I, I do agree with, with Ms. Scott, that we should have some kind of MOU, we should have some kind of an understanding who they belong to, if this is just gonna be something that you're gonna be loaning to the city for X amount of years, you know, who's gonna be taking, taking care of the maintenance, who's, you know, there's a lot of issues that need to be hammered out, but as far as this being something completely out of the norm, I'm sure I could go through the city council and find quite a few more examples. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to inform everyone that it's not unprecedented, that we've gone through the MOU process. I'm willing to listen to that MOU discussion, because I'm using the Do-Hamlet Collection as a, an example that we've done with the Journey Museum, and I know that we've, we've got some other collections that we've got an MOU with, so, it's not precedent, this is not a new precedent, so, but again, I'm willing to take a listen to what you're proposing and what we would be having to have in that discussion for the MOU, before I even get to that point, but look at the other outside sources for funding rather than coming to us. Thank you.
Now, Brad Estes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I just kinda wanna clear everything up for everybody here. So, so if I understand, the mayor is asking to figure out which way the winds blow in here, no, no, so here's where I'm at. You know, if you, if you'd come up with five grand to get a move, I, I'm good with that. Now, with an agreement that if they end up in the Civic, if, if they end up stored over there, and the Civic Center gets developed, and the signs end up in the Civic Center, that's gonna be a long-term decision, and they're gonna be there a long time. Now, if, but, in my mind, if, if they never end up in the Civic Center, and they end up, the agreement needs to be written, in my mind, that if they never end up in the Civic Center, or in a city building, and this group says, "We own them, and we're gonna sell them," then I think we should, in the agreement, we should get our $5,000 back, if they, if they sell them and they leave the city, 'cause Kestloff's aren't gonna be there forever, we're, we're not gonna be here forever, but just some kind of agreement that goes with those signs, and, and leave it at that. That's kinda where I'm at.
Okay. Ron Wyffenbach.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to move to acknowledge the discussion?
Yeah, I think that's okay. All right. Motion to...
Then I just wanna say one thing, Mr. Mayor. Kestloff, I appreciate the passion, because if it wasn't for people like you going out there and finding the stuff, and digging it up, and saving it, a lot of the history would just go away. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, so, motion to acknowledge. In favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That passes, and now, we are on to item number one-eleven. An update from the Fire Department on the city fireworks display. We'll go to Mike Multver.
Thank you, Mayor. If anybody's been tracking the media lately, or the last few days, in social media, we've been having a little bit of fun with this, but as you guys know, starting in about 2012, we moved the fireworks display to New Year's Eve, based on a number of different, what we felt were safety concerns, and some different issues we were having with the site down at Executive Golf Course. We've since been directed by this council on, on or about March 21st, to look at the location again, and also see if we couldn't pull that show back to the timeframe around the July 4th Independence Day celebration. So, in working with the Police Department, and Parks and Rec, and Fire Department staff, we were able to go back down, look at Executive Golf Course. There's been a number of improvements made, in terms of some of the larger trees have been removed, we're gonna adjust the site a little bit, and we think with the staff that we can put forth towards that effort, we can mitigate what risk there is and get the fireworks display to occur on July 2nd, with a rain night scheduled for July 3rd. So, we're certainly happy to be able to do that for the community. It's a good event, and it's certainly been met with a great deal of conversations throughout the community the last few years, and so we're just pleased to be able to make that happen. So, that's all I have. I just need an acknowledgement for the report, and we are set up with a vendor, and the planning is, is in process right now.
Okay, motion and a second to acknowledge. Go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask the Chief Multver a question, please?
Yes.
Chief, I'm sorry, you're being a little monotone. Do you mean to say that we're going to have a fireworks display this year at Memorial Park?
That's the big news, Amanda.
Thank you, and Mayor, I know we're not supposed to clap, but...
You're watching social media, it's been pretty fun, that media's even been having fun with it, and they're calling every day, wanting to know, and so it's, it's been pretty cool. But, yeah, the community's already very pleased, they know what's coming, and so, I for one, as a resident of the community, are very excited to go down July 2nd and watch fireworks. Thank you.
Okay, and to, to just restate this, Fire Chief just announced that there will be a fireworks display at Executive Golf Course, July 2nd, starting at dusk, and if there's a rain out, or something wrong with that date, then it will take place on July 3rd. So, okay, John Roberts.
Mike, I just wanted to thank you for getting to this so quickly, and being able to have this done this year. There was a lot of us that didn't think it was gonna be pulled together this year, and I wanna thank you for many, 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 many of my constituents that have gotten hold of, of me since this started coming forward, and are very excited about having fireworks on the Fourth of July again, instead of New Year's. And I know I, I watched the New Year's display this year from the parking lot of my office, and I will have to get there a lot earlier on July 2nd, to be able to get a parking spot in my own lot of my own office building. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You read the attached memo, there is certainly, all the work's being laid already to begin in August, to start the planning process. We'd like to get to another, probably a three-year agreement with fireworks companies, so this thing will be set for years to come, we hope, so, anyway. More to follow later in the year.
Okay, Darla Drew.
Just a quick comment, and thank you as well. I visited with, with a fireworks vendor soon after, we talked about bringing this back in the summer, and he assured me that the fireworks, as they're designed now, cool off far quicker as they land, so that the fire danger's not quite as, as, as much as it used to be, so we mitigate that fire danger by having better fireworks that cool off sooner, before they hit the ground. Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, Mr. Estes, tomorrow is Election Day, so I'm gonna take this time, thank you, guys. I mean, there's a lot of my constituents I know are gonna greatly appreciate the Fourth of July fireworks again. Thank you. Thank you for the hard work, Chief and Chief.
Okay, motion to acknowledge, I think, was received, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? And thanks to Alderman Steve Laurenti for bringing this up, and getting it on the agenda. Now, we are on to the public hearing items, items one-twelve through one-twenty. There's no speaker forms, so we'll go straight to consent, public hearing, items one-twelve through one-eighteen.
Move to approve.
Okay? Okay, we're gonna poll one. Steve Laurenti.
One-eighteen, please, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other items need polled from consent? And a motion to approve all but one-eighteen. Okay, move it and second it. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, let's go to item one-eighteen. Approved resolution number 2016 dash zero-two-eight B is in boy, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property, except the names of Roman and Wilma Curless, revocable Living Trust, and Marshall Lee Enterprises. Those names to be continued to the June 20th. Hmm? Okay, so that's the item.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I need to talk on it, please.
Call in assumption?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to remove number six and number twelve, because those assessments have been paid in full, and then I also, under the recommendation of legal counsel, need to pull number eleven.
Now, is there a motion on that item, as amended? Okay. Second, please. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to non-consent public hearing items. Items one-nineteen and one-twenty. Can we go back to Charity Doyle, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one-nineteen is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc. for Roger and Heidi Hanslick for a vacation of right-of-way for property generally described as being located at four-zero-one-eight Kaiba Ha Street. Make a motion to continue this to the June 20th, 2016 City Council, as the stipulations of approval have not yet been met.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item one-twenty.
Item number one-twenty is a request by Warner Gear for a vacation of right-of-way for property generally described as being located east of the intersection of East St. Joseph and East Mead Street. I yield the floor.
A motion in a second to approve with stipulation?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may.
This wasn't printed correctly. It was actually forwarded to council without recommendation. At no point in this item's history has it been recommended approval. That's why I yield the, the floor.
Okay. So, knowing that, we still have a motion to approve. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to deny. If I can get a second, I'd like to retain the floor.
Second. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, as far as the information that is in my memory on this one, is that if you pull up the information that was attached on the Planning Commission's report, staff had recommended a denial to the Planning Commission of this, because the city actually has some infrastructure within this right-of-way. And some utilities are also within this right-of-way. And I would make that motion, because the city fights hard enough to try to get right-of-way. So, if infrastructure's already in the right-of-way, I don't know why the city would go ahead and vacate it by a request of a property owner, when the city already has an investment in this right-of-way. Thank you.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm also going to support the denial, because this, this is almost like next door to me. And the fences in it, on this property as well, seem to be an additional interference that has been placed in our, our right-of-way, or the city right-of-way. So, there's some liberties that have been taken on this property as well. Thank you, Mayor, for those reasons. And, and also agree with the Public Works Department for coming up with the rationale for denial as well. Appreciate it.
Okay, Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I can, I can live with the denial, but I do, I can't outlive with the fact that the privilege is being taken outside. This guy takes care of this thing for thirty or forty years. And he, he's got some things sitting down there. They've gotten stolen. He's trying to work with the city to come to some grips with how this can be managed. I would, if you live right next to it, it's hard for me to believe that, you haven't seen that for the last forty years, that Mr. Gear has taken care of this piece of property. He's trying to resolve the issue. So, I take a little bit of offense to the fact that, yeah, there has been some privileges taken, because nobody else has taken them. He's trying to work with the city to get some resolve. He's got a big ditch in this right-of-way. There's a lot of things going on down there. So, denied, and I'm okay with that, but I'm hoping that we can work with staff somehow to resolve the issue that's going on in that area. Because he has done a lot of taking care of that. It's a dead end. There is a fence in there, so people don't get hurt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floors to deny, number one twenty. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number one twenty-one, the bill list. We'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which was attached at ten million, two hundred seventy thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, motion to approve? Second it. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Anyone opposed to adjourning? We're adjourned.